The same as what we've done the past two years. There's just two points that I want to talk about. And one is a different set of criteria. If you remember, the superintendent's evaluation is based on, previously with eight criteria that was set by OSBA and COSA together. And then, any number of quantitative or quasi-quantitative goals in the superintendent's set for. A little bit of difference about those. The criteria now are going to be aligned towards student plans. We talked about this briefly last time, I just kind of want to show you. That cooperates. Okay, so you need to go kind of scroll to the next one, Max. So what you're not expected to see, but just to remind yourself that the strategic plan has five priority areas. They're empowering our students, enriching our facilities, energizing our team, engaging our community, and aligning our resources. We'll sub for the goals, we'll substitute those. For the criteria. And then each of those priority areas has a descriptive statement. I'm not going to read all those to you now, they're they're in the book, but they're in the packet. But for example, under empowering our students, base school discipline empowers students by providing equitable learning and supports their academic growth and achievement, enriching and challenging instruction, learned experiences connected with their interests, passions, and life goals, and a positive school culture. And again, those four have similar descriptors with them. So I I think, I don't know if frustrating is the right word, but like this is using the OSBA and COSA tool last year, and probably even here before, similarly, it seemed worth. There. Thanks, maybe even a better way to put it. I I know that our team utilizing this document and their action plans and um scorecards that we have built from this document, we use them daily, but I mean exactly, but certainly weekly, and you know, we're doing it throughout the year. So I think having you all evaluate by progress and then of course, that's a function of my team's progress in regards to these will be will be much more helpful. So Max, if we can scroll to that next slide. What? Um, the next one. So what you still will have to do will be for each of those four areas, you'll say the process of last time, you'll always give me a rating on each of the four areas. And staff will be able to do so as well. And but ultimately, it comes down to you all coming up with a single number. So you, the way you've done it in the past, when you've all done this, then have it to them, and then they have a discussion. But a four, three, two, or one, four being the highest, four being the lowest on each of those areas. What's even going to be easier this year, like senior for me, is you know, we have pretty comprehensive documentation on how all of our actions are aligned to those areas as well, with quantitative progress markers along the way. And so you'll have access to that, to review, to ask questions. Essentially, I want to make it official that this is um, this is the tool that will be the this. Um, can you scroll to the next one, Max? This is where there's a little bit different, and I am I do kind of, I guess, open this and listen to a little bit of conversation, even if it takes us in a slightly different direction. Um, I'm gonna hand some things out.
Where were these given last year?
Well, you just. Right.
And where were they last year?
Last.
At this time.
Yeah.
So would you agree with her?
Yeah. In fact, well, what the op is right now, this handout are the three goals that I used last year. And then I did for this year's evaluation, Kayden's on it, Kayden's gonna help out with this. He said, wherever. You're at the breadth of the class, it won't be that much. We're not quite there yet.
That's that's fine.
So I didn't, so goal statement one, the base school discipline providing engaging and challenging instruction that will increase student learning and reading writing, and then have problems. And you see there's five quantitative indicators. These are aligned to what the schools presented on last year, but there are specific areas that we think in a district level, we should be keeping an eye on. Fifth grade, eighth grade, and then um tenth grade. Those are transition years, right? Like fifth grade when they're coming out of development, eighth grade when they're coming out of um middle school. Tenth grade, to be totally fair, is a little off, rather than eleven. But our tool we can use to measure given with the tenth grade, and we don't have control. The the one piece of weeds I want to get into with you on these quantitative student goals. If you might read the orgone or wherever sorts of information. Be, I actually look at other newspapers a little bit with a critical eye, because many of them grow for their summative goals. And while we certainly track if our students are growing, I don't think that's a So for example, some districts will demonstrate seventy-five percent of their students met their growth, which is good, not saying that's bad at all, like I said, we track. But that could mean an eighth grader has progressed from, and I'm gonna be, I apologize for giving you a deep of statistics, I'm gonna use quite precise terms. But that could mean that seventh grader has progressed from first grade reading to fourth grade or something like that. While that's certainly commendable, when it means that they met that student where they're at, made some progress. At the district level, we need that seventh grader reading a seventh grade benchmark sort of. So everything here, every district level goal is 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 set towards student achievement, meaning aligned to either grade level that they are in. I I'm not gonna read both statements two and three, that those are aligned experiences, and specifically the experiences of our staff and the experiences of our community partners. If you can turn the page to the one that's not color coded. So the color coded one just demonstrates the progress that we had made last year. Some areas we made the progress we were hoping for, and some areas we not. But if you turn the page, what you see on this page, I just, everything under goal statement one, so goal statement two and beyond are just updated goal targets. So they're the same thing, still measuring student achievement, but still measuring the staff experience, still measuring the community experience, just with continuing to grow, updating numbers. I I do want to draw your attention, and I'm hoping to be expensive to talking about this. The goal statement one, it's students are listed. And it comes, again, the statement comes directly through the strategic plan. The base school discipline will provide problems. Um, as you know, we we had a significant bias incident with her last, I guess, two weeks ago now. Um, it was really impactful on the community and really was still really causing major issues. And I looked at two of our indicators from our student survey. And I guess what makes me really Fifty-eight percent of our students affirm that they feel like they belong in school. And and that was frustrating, and that's the the story. Um, that that ends lovely, and you can see the ratings on student surveys of a three point six two out of nine. Um, that's actually one of our lowest scores for the district. And you know, we get student surveys, staff surveys, community surveys, and at the district level, outcomes does not need those, but that's 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 pretty. Compared to other things of the. Eventually, sixty-four percent of students affirm that they feel safe. So we have quite a bit going on. Yeah, we are, uh, Darla, one of the things Darla did last week was uh conducting three times, she never been interviewed, but she did maybe focus, which is another way to put it, a conversation dialogue of students on just attendance. And attendance I don't want to keep, it's causal with the student experience, it's causal with the culture of school. And so that's really what she was talking about, giving them. Um, Kayden working with our district equity around, um, you know, really understanding the experiences students are having um at school. And then I think you saw last last month when we were talking about the new social emotional stuff. Transformation?
Transformation.
Transform, thank you. Transformative social emotional learning, and as we implement those strategies and continue the work with our students. Uh, those are some actions we're taking in on. Actually, it's a game. And and making sure that Don, um, Dan's in that little office already. You're welcome to stay there, but he's been there at the bottom. And um, you guys are probably ten minutes, okay? And additionally, we are, we're pushing consent agenda in regular session. A small commitment embedded to the um handbook, the student handbook that we all have for last time. And it's actually making sure that when we when we have incidents of harassment, that if they are of of a biased nature, that that is called out separately and dealt with specifically. So, um, I don't, I apologize for not having any like guiding questions or anything, but I want to just create some space. We can talk about any of these goals, or we can talk about like that, but no one wants to. Okay. People here, trying to.
I I'm just trying to understand what this actually means, sort of, that's, we'll say one, we have fifty-eight percent feel like they belong, or it's forty percent feel like they're say that's wrong. But the percentage of affirmation that the target is ninety. Where was that? Was that just like a reach goal, or is that actually based on?
So the, no, thanks, you know, that's a great question. The, where I say that the target is four one oh to exceed the normed expectations, these are pretty normal, I think if ten thousand districts are passing, I don't know if that's the case. But what we get from the provider is um, not like what the most growth was, but like the average amount of high growth. So if the score was three point five, and you want to compare yourself to schools that made a lot of progress, here's what you can expect based on similar districts and possible. Going from three point six to four is definitely stressful already. But it's because I feel that fifty-eight percent of people is far too low for kids to feel like they belong in school. But ninety percent is simply, um, I I can't, like, there's no physical limit, right? And it it, yeah, I I mean, it really is just, I think, if you really want to hold like face to the room, I guess, but um, but it's really just me breaking, we can't have ninety percent of our kids feeling they belong in school, and we really keep pushing ourselves.
I mean, the the number in general, fifty-eight percent seems kind of low. It's Do they have to, I mean, obviously, they're on the grade scale or something?
Yeah, it's a hundred percent.
And so what what constitutes actually a failure where they're done to the quick one? What what type of sort of one or two?
So this is anyone that, so fours and fives are like, strongly, very, very deep. Three is neutral, and then two and one are done. So this is sort of, so almost forty, forty percent are if the ones, two, or
Do they belong for that of some material that you're modeling this actually?
No.
Almost strikes me as very, actually. Tell me what you feel, what you belong to. What is that?
You know, that's a good point, well, I think I think if we, I guess, not your we can change. But I wonder if that's avoiding the challenge, I mean, but belong, feeling belonging at school. I don't think there's a universal definition, like every kid would just been the exact same way, but I think when we follow it up with things like those focus groups, and follow it up with things like story circles, I think it I think it lends us to think maybe we do have sports students, and the students still come to us.
Yeah, they try to distract. If if four say that they want that, in fact, they don't want. Um, it's belong could be an expectation to a sense comfort, to uh um, but could be also, like I said, very strong, a sense of expectation, that's where I can. I'm I'm thinking more for personal theorem, um, are you, are you, are you familiar with the bell stroke, if, I mean, fully, completely? Because then the subtlety that they've started really changed the concept of a first struggle in the dramatic even in use use small specific groups. And um the the ones I've noted is that you only ask questions about some of, about a deal with some of the kids. Happy, sad, welcome, rejected, whatever. And belong just doesn't strike me as fits in that family. Starts to get too abstract with meetings, or, I mean, you have to have something to define who you approve out of the school. But I'm not sure if, and how how do you how do you determine what it is that will make the other um forty-two percent belong?
All right, can I step up for a second?
Yeah, totally.
Because I think that's a great question, and I think that one of the places that this really comes from in our new social emotional learning standards are really all about and belonging to your um smaller groups, belonging to your school, belonging to the school district, belonging to your community, and what that means as far as like four of the place.
So it hasn't been accepted in in the the material as a, as an appropriate term.
It is, yeah, it's one of the main focus.
Well, if you look at this, I'm like, that's
Yeah.
The other, the other thing I, and I feel like it's a little beyond the the normal school, I'm always trying to connect, these are kind of academic terms, right? Only trying to connect pushing a little bit further towards the real world, and what kind of a person you want to have, or a creative issue, or a well, and so for example, and and I know this puts a kind of like different, so or maybe that maybe a little too far, too aspirational, but what's shocking, I read this is something along the lines of students, how many students would say, say they feel positive, positively motivated uh in their life at school, by their, by their experience at school? In other words, some, some touch on their emotional state. Um, it's okay to 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 want to learn, that's good, that'd be positive. But I think if we're really good, God, we need to learn with people in graduation that are actually positive people. And not just, you know, objectively uh captured the the knowledge.
Sure, I don't disagree, well, I think the reason I put the, you know, safe at school is really more, remember, the, we have data on I think it's fifteen different questions, yes. So we look at a a lot more than just weird. Um,
I'm not gonna need you back if you have to.
Yeah, totally, that's, I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at, we have more, and I I like it safely, because I think some students come to school here and feel very safe, regardless of what anyone says. And I think we have students here who feel very uns each other well said to them, and that's a part that.
I don't mind those weird things, and so I don't want to, another one that applies to what I'm talking about, or we can free our own as a standard, we would be aspirational as stars or two.
That that's what I'm saying, totally. I don't have, let me look to see if it already exists on there, and if not, to the list of questions. That's
I think it also infers a a personal care for the students in addition to our job of teaching this.
Yeah, so like one thing we were proud of at the elementary school, right? What was it? Well, I figured out the question's worded, it's something, do you make your teachers term? But that's not exactly how it's sort of been a pair of. Like the elementary school, I like four point six five.
That's
Over one million. Um, so that, you know, that means
Maybe that's, maybe it's a summation of that, right? Is is useful. Rather than recreate the wheel.
And I think that's one thing, interesting, that you'll you'll see using the strategic plan for our evaluation. You'll have all of our data, so you'll have asked all the student questions, you know. I call these ones out specifically, give us a little bit of points.
Okay, that's, what you agree? Of course. When you get handed out to the kids, what's that process? Would they just hand it over to you to answer these questions, or is it, hey, here's some examples of kind of what we're looking for in that question? If if they have an understanding of what they're doing, okay? Two versus three is a really minor change, but could have pretty big implications.
Well, that's one reason why I like them on these. It doesn't matter if we can see it or not, as long as you get it more than neutral, it counts the same. Great question, um, it varies, it varies as you kind of go up the page group with our littlest kids. We read it to them. They have the white pads, and it even to the point where you're taking too long, early get out of there. Um, and then, and then all the way to the older, older students, it's more hated, sort of. Right, so I guess.
Can we do safety, like we tell them that we use it to like change, it's it's valuable feedback that we will use to, you know, inform our work with them. And I think we also are rolling out the survey data with the students, so like proving to them that they're not just clicking boxes, like coming back to them in the fall and saying, hey, these are the things that you said were going well. What should we keep doing? Here's the things that are, that were low on the survey. You know, why, why are, why did you write that? Why, why was it, why do we think it was low? What can we do at the community to to improve? So I mean, like, and I think we have to build trust with them, that that's really gonna change things, and then they'll take the survey hopefully, like more and more seriously as they have more experience. Because this is only their, what, right, second time doing it? Yeah, so it's still like they're learning the process of like how it's used, but we do need to prove to them that we care about data. Because then I don't think, like, they won't take it seriously uh if we don't object, and it's that one.
Kind of to your question, is, when it's admission, because it's part of the question, this is a process we go through in order to reach our can we, can we say, whatever location, we're trying to reach attention, learning advice, we want to make sure we 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 need, do they, do they get reminded of that's what it's all about?
I think, I don't, I can't speak to what I'm teaching us to do, but I think our goal would be for every teacher to say, you know, we want to be the best for this, or we want our students to be the best. Is this how we one of the ways where your voice helps us in our doing it? And we wanted to use, I said, you know, that's, that's I think science is actually taking impact. So they just yeah, okay. That'll give them First, that one speaker is far better than I can, I mean, from social science research, we know when we take surveys, we get one of those, like when we go back and ask them, is this going to meant by that? Generally speaking, we get that affirmative, it's like yes, with quantitative data, while fifty-eight percent may not be the precise term, but whatever decision we make, it's kind of fifty-eight percent when we talk to the kids. It's kind of confirmed, that will give them, hearing their voices and
I just, I appreciate that's I'm gonna say, especially in the machine, so I love, you are taking it back to kids and letting them know, like, we're, we're really trying to use your voice, giving you like an empower ways to change what's happening here. Uh, and I I think, yeah, these numbers are dummy, but also not really, you know, I I think that would start us, and so why do we feel? Um, and I think, so yes, we have our and this is, you know, others who we I would blast up here, it's a culture shift, we're not going to even the large I think it is not these things, why have loads, like, you know, why this, why? But I appreciate what you said, like, I go home, play video games, right? I think that's the T cell framework, including people who's studying schools and kids are learning this, and it's a culture shift, so they're learning more, so we need to everybody, I just really appreciate all of you working on this, and obviously you have something to do, and I
I'm gonna shift this a little bit, thank you, thank you, thank you for the feedback. I have to follow up and refine some of these questions, again, I'm so excited for the brilliant feedback, I'm excited to do the work. Um, I have an update for you on field three sixty-five. The the chair of our committee had an unexpected engagement that he named. So, thanks, Kayden, yeah. But I don't know, I'm hoping that nothing's new on this, but we do, I do have one asked again, and so that's one part of the edition of the kind of final product, don't get very detailed, it's not meant to be the final. It's just meant to be a straighter. But the idea would be to turf the NBL, move the lights, one one destruct here, we don't want to repeat five light bulbs anymore, or six light bulbs, maybe we got a sore, you know, so anyway, don't get caught up in that right now. We have a committee of thirteen community members um met September twenty-nine to give training on identifying potential donors, working with potential donors, et cetera. We are on a soft launch right now, we're just getting some motion to it printed. Um, essentially, where we're at is, we're in the quiet phase, which means the thirteen committee members are each assigned one or more people that are believed to be significant donors. And they're, they're working with them to establish what could be those, you know, large groups, or larger relative to all of us, but um the goal is to raise approximately a million dollars from the quiet phase, to more turn it over to what's more of like a public phase, which is where you see the kind of asking for a smaller donation, it's possible to do stuff like drug tournaments, and you know, all those. Um, couple, couple pieces. One is in, well, fundraising is in, in like, right now, we're taking as much money as we can take, we're not basing this, that term, construction will likely be in two phases. With the turf and the lights coming as soon as we pay for that. And then like the grants thing being when that additional money um one thing that we had done, so this is a discussion asked of you all, but I want to make sure we're all, all of those thirteen members of the um, the community, um, getting made cabinet have been asked to make a donation, it's being voted. And and that number can be any amount of we're we're asking that so that when we go out on the meeting, we can say all cabinet members that made a donation, supporting this. But donation will, we'll save a bunch, I don't want to do that, right, and use a bunch, whatever. Um, we're asking that the board consider this thing so that the board would also make a donation that had been to to you all. Um, I remember serving on a board uh with the the business education conference, not all that, and so this. And they did the same thing, and I early on, I'm teaching period, I have, there are means that some some others have and just made a donation that seemed really, basically, again, to them, I thought they'd be very small. I I use that like not very well articulated example of like, it really does not matter that much. We just want to be able to, in a bit ceremonial, I guess, demonstrate what we have in front of us, so, um, you don't need to knock the motion for that or anything. Um, I can get to you all sort of a a form that we would use and with, you know, more complexity, but okay, just on, it can it can be in any amount of money that you feel is meaningful to you, whatever that means. Um, and then we took the time to be brought, which would be, we have a post for the cabinet, we have a post for the board. And those three shows. Um.
What is the.
Get your.
Nice with the, just the first phase, we should be the top.
Right now, it's around two million for the, and and that that's probably. We we wanted to kind of get, I mean, uh, we five open to get five stars, then the people would get a track. Kind of work together on estimate, not for the bid, but you know. And it it's probably high to say two million, but that would. But definitely. And then three, no, four, almost four. For the grandstands and all additions to that. Again, that's probably a little bit high than it is. Everything has been dreamt up. But that's the numbers that are being used.
Do you have any issues with that?
Oh, shit. No, please, fine, we have um, O D F and W. And Golden Valley. Watershed or something. One of the, we we didn't get a grant a while ago. And it was just weird. Basically, we didn't know why O D F and W wasn't writing with with us, thousand of feedback we got. Now, O D F and W actually have grants themselves, so they're coming out. Getting out of the group with us, we're hoping to. One, you learn sport, but also hopefully get funding from their grant to go into the next phase of the building, but. But yes, we will need to fix that.
That's definitely, I mean, it's a six year.
It's the whole.
Thank you.
The opportunity to all of the.
Yes, all this, all this bonding. Um. Any other, I'm gonna go get John and Dan to talk about. You know, the the consideration with second office. Now, this is very good for Ben to you, um, but you won't have to hear too much to next. Or more than takes that. Any, 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 I guess, two, two asks. Briefly, anything else on Kelly, you know, three six five, but also. Um. Chairman Edison, Pete Edison, who's chairman is. If you happen to hear, if you know the governor, so you know anyone asking question about this, or if they. He's doing such a great job of running this campaign and is absolutely, if you have any questions or any. Ideas for him. Please, you know, on your ideas, you know, I mean, very much. In chat. The other piece, uh, every donor will be. There are various ways you can see the. All right. I'm gonna go uh, give John and Dan. I'm going to present the memo, which is in, the memo is in the book, if you wanna follow up on it, not just.
I'm assuming you know.
But what really goes to think? If you push the survey and you see. Spirit really made it with this.
Is there a bother me, I'm worried about you know.
Ah.
If everything could change.
I'm changing. You know.
That's. Start. Yes. Follow your notebook. If you're not doing it, well, following.
I think.
It is.
All right.
And if they're done.
Uh, so yeah, Brian, I guess just to kick it off, we're. Just.
Yeah, floor's yours.
We, uh, you know, obviously planned. During the master planning process to come back and after. Uh, do kind of some research and um. Look into this building, we knew we should try to get some additional information. For the for the board and the group and. Be able to at some point before the final master plan delivery, try to make a decision of keep the building or. Or uh, demo the building, so um, I think, you know, bringing um. Brick on board, obviously starting that process and now having P and C, that's already been approved, but.
Not yet, and we can uh.
Okay. Well. You know, almost onboard officially, but um. It's just, uh, we've got some additional information and I think Dan's done a great job, we're kind of summarizing it in. Um, with the partner here as well to assist on. Kind of cost feedback and um, sequencing things like that, so. Um, I guess with that. Anything else to kind of lead into it?
No, thank you for that, um. And I'll, obviously the board will ask whatever question, the only thing I've been asking, um. I know we all have an impact, but maybe before we use a real quick introduction, um, I know we see a treatment, but not the the whole.
So Casey's coming in with cornerstone, I'll be the high school project manager. John Abel's cornerstone, uh, program manager.
And I'm Dan S with Brick Architecture, I'm the principal in charge of the.
And Parker Berkey with the P and C construction, uh, brick construction manager for the contractor.
All right, all right, so. As everybody in the chance to. Just wondering how in depth. You want me to go through it? I was thinking of just kind of talking about the highlights. Um. And then maybe open it up for questions from you guys, since. And so then. The key thing is, as we're, well, we're early in the master planning part of the project and we call it master planning pre-design. So we're doing. A lot of this sort of. Comprehensive look at your campus, both in terms of the bond or around now, but also. Twenty or thirty years down the road. Uh, to see if. But. See if the campus can accommodate future growth. And to make sure that decisions we make now. Um, don't have to be undone in the future. So that we have an overall long-term plan and then a a plan for now for this bond program. That makes sense and can be carried through in the future, so that's. Where we are now is understanding all the pieces and parts and then starting to think about design. And obviously, one of the considerations is this building is kind of front and center on the site, it's on Main Street. So, uh, a question obviously is what potential use would there be for this building and. Does it make sense to um, continue and explore that? Or or is there another avenue, like mentioned before, like is, does it make more sense in the long run? To, you know, um. Honor this building and remember it, but ultimately remove it so that you can build new construction in its place. And so we're trying to be, uh. You know, give you information and um, keep the emotion out of it, a lot of things, I think. Some of you know, I actually worked, I was architect, I'll do the renovation this years ago. And so. Uh, problems like this, I I like restoring the buildings, but um. As an educational architect, as architect, you guys selected to, you know, execute these projects and we have to give you all the information so that. Um. You know, you're making decisions that make sense in terms of. Uh, all the issues, educational, fiscal responsibility, you know. Community and personal. So, um. We're also doing what we call due diligence, which is kind of some homework to try to understand things with a focus on this building. So we have on our team, uh, mechanical engineering, mechanical and electrical engineering firm, they're called Saison Group. And then a structural engineer called PCS. And then a civil engineer called Three J Consulting. So we've asked all of them over the past few weeks to really dive into the site and into this building to. Uh, identify any issues that haven't been uncovered or. More investigation that needs to be done. And um, so we've done kind of a preliminary review. In terms of this building. A couple of things have come to light, the mechanical engineer feels that the. The costs that were originally anticipated um, in your previous pre-bond work with sources from architects. They feel that maybe those numbers are a bit low, so they recommended, um. You know, in reality, you're gonna gut the building in terms of building systems. And they just recommended to me that maybe the numbers should be increased by about twenty percent. Um, the structural engineer looked at the seismic study that's been done. And said more or less, he agrees with it and he certainly agrees with the approach that, you know, other engineer. Suggested, which is basically building perimeter walls, you have these masonry walls that. Will not hold up in a seismic event. Um, so a common solution is just build new walls all the way around perimeter on the inside to give it that that reinforcement. He agrees with that, but he said, you know, the thing that isn't in that study is. You know, the first part of structural engineering, which is gravity loads. And he said, I have a lot of concerns that the building of this era doesn't have the. The the beams, columns, joists. And footings that you would uh, need in a building, that you would put in a building if you were building it new. And there could definitely be some deficiencies.
Yeah, Dan, I mean, but in Mill and Island, we've done about ten, twelve of these seismic structures, we did, I did four of these unredecorated mystery sale. I mean, it's the the majority of. The work is in just unearthing. Building these big anchor foundations essentially for that new wall to sit on. And we were looking at the estimate, there's, there was less than. I think ten thousand dollars of concrete in there. It was just like that felt, that felt light.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I've had some experience in the last couple of years with. Uh. Buildings not even as old, but uh, buildings from the forties and fifties were. Uh, uncovered. And you start excavation to do seismic upgrade and find out there actually aren't even footings under some walls, you know, literally, they just. Was rubble and built on that, you know, so I would. Entirely wouldn't be surprised. And I think it's proven that this, until we do investigation with the budget, that there's going to be some of that. Um. As part of this project. Keep in mind, everything we're doing now are budgets and not estimates, we haven't designed anything, so what we're trying to do is create a budget. So there's additional uh, structural work. That was probably the cost for mechanical, like the upgrades was low. Uh, another thing we thought is with all the seismic work. Uh, you're going to have to re. So we're putting costs to that, that seems likely. Um, we deleted. The cost for the elevator. Because, uh. In a perfect world, you're building an elevator in the new. For this building as well, so we're assuming one elevator capable project. Um. And the other thing is the hazmat abatement. It seemed pretty low for billions, whereas we. Took an educated guess and added some dollars to that in terms of budgeting. So we come up with a higher number and then that from compared to the previous one, and then on top of that. Um. We're recommending a ten percent project contingency for dealing with the building of this era because. The more you're, you know, you just never find good news when you start remodeling a building like this, you just need to plan for that, if there's going to be surprises along the way, just. You know, whether it's footings that aren't there or whatever, it's just. It's quite likely that there's going to be unexpected surprises and. Just at this early, early phase, it seems pretty, you would budget for that.
And typically in the new construction, we'll budget like five percent construction contingency, um, because we. Once you get out of the realm, that's kind of your unknown. It's kind of then just coordination, reminds things like that, um, you're not gonna. Unearth anything at that point, this new construction, so. That's the big difference where. In projects like this, you typically find more. Keep looking and opening things up, so that's why the additional five percent.
So where we are now is uh, the revised budget estimate that I think we said. It's about three point nine million higher than the previous source from this net for overall project. Budget. And uh, we haven't done the investigation, I think. Next, if you go to keep going. Keep going. Yeah, so this page and the one after it. Show the areas that the structural engineer is recommending various forms of investigation, which basically means, you know. Selectively cutting into a building, certain distance and observing what's there. So they're, you know, they're concerned about. These columns, what what are these columns and how are they really attached? Um, they're worried about footing, so worried about connections. Um. From like the floor to the walls. And so selectively, you know, they've identified areas they want, it'd be a good idea to take a look at. So that um, they can make more informed decisions. If we were gonna renovate this, on what would need to be done.
And we, Parker did walk through, um. Some contractors and abatement contractors, so we. We have those numbers, it's. You know, I think. All I projected a little over thirty eight thousand, that also accounts for a few. You know, other things.
Yeah, twenty five thousand, if everything kind of went perfectly, but there could be additional costs that could add up to forty if needed.
Or the full abatement?
That that's not fully, just just the investigation for excavation to on the exterior to validate footings and. And the destructive demolition and a abatement for that. The the demolition is expensive because it is a bait demolition.
Yeah.
Um. It's back, changing things back.
So so what was the, I'm sorry, do you guys have more questions over there?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay, so regarding the forty K for seventeen bolts. And for our exterior, the total of twenty. That can. What, how many, how long, how many people for you, uh, using to do that?
Sure, so we figured uh, three days, um, basically would be the duration we uh, brought my with five star. And to give us a. An estimate on excavation and repairs, um, demolition, um. Or just a pack for seventeen bowls is uh, ten thousand, and that's because. The area of high ceilings, it's almost eleven feet in there over existing. Cabinets and stuff, that they're gonna be baked with bigger scaffold to set up scaffolding in each room, take it down, go to the next one. Get up there, cut it open, dust control, it's lava plaster, so it just, it just adds up a lot quicker than I was expecting, but.
Sure. And obviously, definitely costs are pretty, pretty expensive, uh, just moving looks in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you gotta, you gotta get up there, it's not necessarily ladder work. What we're we're thinking, so.
So. So no ladder work to reach eleven, but seeing. So we can do that by two foot.
It's. We can look at that, but the idea was the containment, um, and having catching all that lava plaster dust to come down, so they have all their plastic and everything.
So I guess whether we need to do that, if we have to step then. Since the building's not gonna be occupied, they're gonna need to contain something if they're talking about terminating the term thing.
Yeah, no, that would, this is the worst case cost to to patch it back and to leave it likely.
Almost two thousand dollars a hole, I guess, I was almost. Wondering what due diligence was done to evaluate whether that was a real number or not.
Yeah, we uh, we work with the five star to give us uh, three day cost to make all those. Bowls and and patch and repair and maybe contractor and walked them through, so.
Yeah.
We could definitely bring more people, um. To take another look at another approach at it.
Yeah, add the value like this, I guess, I would hope they have due diligence back. To explain the costs that we're we're talking about doing. Don't incorporate how many people, duration, expenses, rentals, all that.
Sure, yeah, yeah, we can, we can give, give more detail, we didn't have, had enough time for the, as an attachment, but we can provide that kind of show all of make, you know, what makes up the investigation cost, so.
And as we talk about fundraising, you know, taking the shovel and excavating outside for two thousand dollars, which would probably hit some high school students to take a couple of holes. Eight grand, it's not a bad, bad tip. Uh, so Max, if you could go more in sheets. And so you know, if we're assuming a project cost budget of ten point seven million, the question is, uh, let's set that aside and what would this building, what could it become as part of the high school program? And again, the previous uh, form that this had an idea of this as a library. And then uh, basically two classrooms and the career center is really part of the library. And we can't really think of any better solution than that, um, in terms of the high school program. Uh, it could be in a library space, um. But we, we can't really see any, you know, broader use of the building than that, so. Um, it's kind of uh, so then we, we took that and said, okay. It's basically out of the overall program, you're taking a library and two classrooms, and essentially your project budget spending ten point seven billion on that. What would you, what would be budgeted for that if it was all new? What would the budget only be for that? And the number, the budget number that we have based on the current construction cost per square foot that we're talking about, which is seven hundred and forty dollars a square foot. Uh, we came up with uh, about six point eight million project costs for basically two classrooms and a library. Um, if it was all new construction, so that, I don't know if that's confusing and people understand that. But essentially what, you know, uh, occurred to all of us is you're spending more you know, you're, you're spending this much, but you're getting that. So that's just information, you know, um, that doesn't mean you should or shouldn't do it, but that is um, I think that's a reasonable way to gather. Um, the other, you know, we looked at other ways of using the building and it's actually not a huge building, you know, they have fifty the perimeters for footage, you know, including the upstairs, it's somewhere in the range of ten thousand, five hundred. It's not huge. Um, and so there's not a lot, you know, without completely rebuilding all the structure. Um, you know, you're gonna put stuff around the perimeter, and then you have this space in the middle here, which frankly, the size of this room is a little bit bigger than what a new classroom would be, one new classroom would be. In, in the new school, the new, currently where we're looking, which is a kind of typical approach for a high school is about nine hundred and fifty square feet uh, per classroom. And I think this is
Ten forty three.
Yes, a little over, you know, so, um. It's hard to, to, but you know, to find more um, program space in this building. Um.
We also looked at like, you know, enclosing it, but then you basically have an entire room with no daylight at all. Uh, it wouldn't be very tall ceilings to be able to make the library as well, to be able to get the second floor, and then you basically have to re do a new, you know, interior footing all the way to carry that new second floor, so we drive up the cost, so. There's uh, you know, there's, there's options out there, but every time you, you know, you start peeling back the layers, you know, you find as we got a lot of the difficulty in the bill building, how, how cost just goes up, um, you know, kind of at a higher square footage cost than new, so that's, you know, one of the challenges, but how to reuse this, but um, there's like Dan saying, I mean, it is usable, it's just uh, you know, it was, is it, is it how you guys want it?
So, you know, I put in a memo a couple of options, I think, for the board, one of which is to um, at some point, doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point make a decision that it's investment curse of the project to demo this building and, and build new. Uh, another option would be to decide this building needs to be saved. Recognizing that it might cost more than new construction, so have us kind of track that and start developing options. You know, what parts of the program could not be built there, and I just put in the memo. You know, like the cost difference at three point nine million project cost is kind of equivalent to about four classrooms. So, you know, you might not replace four classrooms, I mean, I don't even know how you would do that, but um, you know, just in terms of trying to get apples to apples, you know, there's, there's those kind of trade offs that might need to be made. I mean, the third option is, you know, you know, we could keep doing more investigation, you know? I mean, right now, there's a project budgets and we can keep looking at it. Um, I think in order to really understand this building, I think you have to do the investigation. Then I think our structural engineer would have to begin some preliminary design work to really figure out um, what needs to be done, so that we can start coming up with uh, real estimates um, for this work. Uh, I am a little concerned also about the budget in the previous estimate for interior renovations, because it's pretty much like gutting the building, um, to a certain degree. And um, they had two hundred dollars a square foot, which is kind of low, in that level of work, but we'll see.
Another thing, uh, when we brought P and C on board. Sounds like they've got a very similar project going right now, um, and kind of just comparing, it's a two-story reinforced masonry building, and the cost was still about eight seventy five for that. So um, it's a little bit higher than even what we're carrying, so for, for the renovation of this, what the new construction number we're carrying is seven forty, which we're hopeful is a little conservative too. We don't know until we go to it, um, but um, just, you know, for comparison sake, I think that sort of, you know, helps validate the renovation number for just an unreinforced masonry building. It's just um, a difficult uh, project, obviously, that kind of drives some of that cost up. And I guess what we haven't really talked about, um, is just obviously the master plan concepts. Leaving it here hasn't, I don't think we know yet, Dan, what has, but um, yeah, obviously, working around this version have the flexibility of not for how you design the additions and stuff, but.
Um, yeah, so we've started uh, with the bond management team, the really early design process of developing master plan options and actually Max, let's see whether, I don't know, you want to show that. It's very early, the way we, we work and the way we do it with, with your group is we basically came in with all these little pieces and parts and everybody understood the problem and we, you know, divided into two groups and asked each group to kind of figure out uh, you know, long-term master plan and which, uh, the yeah, no, the, the other P D M. So thi- this is just one of the options that one group came up with. Kept it up a little, we didn't remember. I didn't do that last week, but me and, but topics took over, so we're gonna do it tomorrow. But um, we're just, um, one group came up with an option, well you know, add all new construction on this part of the site in the future. Now, keep in mind, this is a twenty to thirty year plan, this is exactly, all of these components wouldn't be happening now in this town. Um, but uh, we're trying to sort of solve problems. Uh, one idea is to separate buses for auto traffic with a plaza, um, to spur parking in different locations. But in terms of the building, you know, the, the group basically felt, both groups pretty much felt that um, maybe save the existing gym, you know, even on water, keep the existing gym. And then acquire, obviously, keep the middle school, uh, wrestling and these other athletic buildings would retain. But over time, there'd be replacement for a system bond and then an addition in future bonds as you grow. Uh, in terms of the classroom, we can see a second classroom in, in future. Um, expand or grow the C T program, um, add another gym next to the existing gym. Put a cafeteria at this end of the building, and then um, auxiliary gym, performing arts, I mean adjacent to the middle school, this is one, I'm approaching one group came up with this as a design finding needs, um. And then there's staying over at the elementary school for a which of K through two or K through three school. Um, because there's really no space in the, in this unit.
We've got a new entrance on Oak shown that is to help spread out the, you know, buses potentially coming around rather than on. And then the new way of going out to, well, so just an idea to sort of obviously, everything's happened, that's a lot right now to try to try to find a solution to that, so. Uh, we did have an initial kickoff meeting in the city, sort of throwing these ideas out there, um. And so we're just starting to explore some of those options.
So, questions or comments?
Yeah, the last thing on your desk, don't worry about time, I, I can, um, connect. It's, it's your meeting, I mean, shoot, but I think it's important. Are there any, uh, what was presented, the memo, what, what each other talked about? We're getting this one's concept, but like, what, what question do you think we have?
So, um, you guys have thirty five percent for soft costs, to describe what the soft cost would cover.
Soft cost covers like architectures, new A B's, all our uh, consultants um, for the project, but you know, geotechnical or special inspections, things like that, um, permitting. Um.
Project contingencies.
Yeah, contingency, things like furniture pictures, equipment, so it's, it's kind of we were looking at, well, should we just compare the construction cost only, which is really the basis of these two comparisons, but since the side of the estimate had included soft costs, we decided just to include that on both, so they both are carrying the same.
We think that, uh, so
Yeah.
One of the things that I think would be helpful for the board and for the community for that matter is to actually understand what the cost differences between renovating this building
Mm-hmm.
versus charity. Right, and one of the things that I see through outdoors is putting programs in this building, which it needs. But in doing so, we would also be subtracting those programs for the new high school. So that money is already in the budget, so by adding that program into this, this facility we're, we're not really paying extra. We're just entering in one bucket in the new high school and putting it here, I mean, you're not putting two libraries in a high school. No, but I think you're paying more for a library here. And, and Dan, I, I don't, I don't disagree, but that's not what the real cost is, right? We're trying to understand what is the real and by putting numbers in for programs, sorry, in price and putting that in here, we're not seeing the real cost. In my mind, the real cost, as an example, would be, we have to demo the roof because we have to replace the roof. So the cost is not brand new roof, that's gonna be in the project, isn't the cost of the demo, because we're not doing it in new construction.
So in bullet three in the summary, we tried to lay out the delta of the two. Um. But I, I guess what I'm saying, like, and I, I don't want to be sure I'm understanding you wrong, so we're saying that the renovation cost is ten million, seven hundred for new construction would be six million, eight hundred thousand, if we were to build in this footprint, that program.
But what I, what I'm saying is, let me give you a different example, in, in what you've shown is four restaurants. And inside each restaurant, this is two fixtures, or a total of eight fixtures. When I look at the building code, each fixture is fifty people for, you know, the ton. That means the four restaurants that were served in this space is for four hundred people. Right, so for each restaurant, it's, it's one hundred people, so that means the restaurant has a pass for four hundred people. I'm assuming you're putting more restaurants in the, in the overall, right? And I don't know what that quantity is, when I did the rough estimates, it was probably about twenty four, you know, roughly speaking. Depending on what you do with the gym, but anyway, my point is that, and then during the new restaurant that's gonna be in the new high school, you're choosing to put four here in this building, make centers back in the bathrooms. Right, benefit of utilizing existing fixtures, but that program cost is part in high school. That is cheaper cost per square foot. So then make the difference, then the difference isn't, hey, we're spending ten million dollars to build it. No, the difference is the cost renovating this site, these baths compared to new, right? If this new bathroom is two hundred dollars a square foot and you renovate this to fifty, all right, it's fifty dollars a square foot difference. The increased cost for them for renovating the building. Does that make sense? It doesn't, it doesn't, I think, first of all, every space in the building does not have a roof. So you can't just say because we're building it here and we have to replace the roof, that means we're not building I think the purpose of this building is about seven thousand square feet. Just because we're putting a library and two classrooms in here, doesn't mean we're not building seven thousand square feet of roof over there. They're not connected because it's a two-story building, we don't know how it's gonna be configured. So it's not apples to apples, it's really apples to oranges. I also think the, first of all, we haven't, we're using Source from design. We haven't designed the building, you don't know how many toilets and all that, and you're right, there may be savings because we don't have to do as many over there. Um, but there's also design considerations, like you don't want to put all your toilets over here when you're building your high school over there, you want the toilets where the kids are. So you may end up building more toilets than you really need because you want to save this building and you want to build a whole high school. I don't know, I mean, that's the kind of thing we have to look into. Again, I go back to what are the real costs that try to save the building, and that's what we need to explain to our, to the building. And what I see is a lot of being very conservative on the, and all the risks that you guys are seeing in the building. And no due diligence understanding, so when in the structural calculations in their bid, not calculations, but in the estimate that they put in here was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to understand any contingency what may happen. And it, based on what the structural can ever gave you, Dan, was we need another five thousand dollars to evaluate, you know, as an S. And that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of contingency, and my thing is that we don't we, you know, you guys, don't get me wrong here, because we, Will and I faced this last spring dealing with bonding. And they didn't want to, you know, talking about industry, they didn't want to give us what we thought and what we were seeing in the news. They were very conservative to make sure that they were, you know, safe when they provided those numbers. What we're trying to figure out, at least in mine, is what's the real cost of this building? And it's as simple as that, if you're putting a new foundation around the perimeter, it's ninety three thousand nine hundred dollars, yes. Can you design that foundation if you see that the gravity loads are not sufficient to, to provide gravity? I would think that the engineer, you know, dig a hole, put concrete, you put rebar, you can do that, right? If, if latterly, this building is not working, if it has then doesn't that mean we're already replacing all the It isn't, so we don't have a design, that's one thing I want to make clear to everybody, there's no, there's there's a very conceptual plan that the previous architect developed, that seems like a good roadmap. We didn't have a design, so if the level of detail that you want, Ron, is like, really
Really, what are we designing? We're going to need to design this building. To a level of detail that's going to. Provide information for cost estimators, like our team, but also an independent customer. To really understand that that's in bold. And that's not a one-month exercise, you guys. That's six months. Of time invested to make sure that we have really detailed information. What we're happy to do. I'm happy to do that. I just want people to understand that could have an impact on the design of the whole project.
Is it is that based off her mandate when you when you guys review currently?
It's based on how much time it takes to do this stuff. Yeah, so you can't just do it in a week.
Well, I understand. I understand.
It's just physically not sustainable. There's so much to think about, so many options. I mean, it's going to take a while just to get an understanding of this. Keep in mind, we don't have drawings of this building. They don't exist, so we're really.
And gravity loads, did the structural engineer when they were here, did they see any cracks in the middle brick? On the exterior, or we see a deflection? Or or were any of the structures cracking? Let's see if we're concerned about gravity load.
Uh, I I'll have to review his report. I'm not sure what drove him to those conclusions, but he was. He did make it a point in his report, they probably loads are probably an issue in this building.
I'll just. What we have faced in this district. Is questioning everything that we made. On all occasions. If we go present your report to the community. The the education that we have in this district. The engineers, the doctors, the estimator, I mean, we have it in this scheme, even though it's. Anyone gets a shred of anything that they want to come back and question this stuff, we didn't do our due diligence. We're going to be on the book. We're trying, you know, we know. Fix everything up. We need to be thinking about our next. And we need to make sure that we get this decision that you're asking us to make. And right now, I don't see, I see a lot of conservative risk that we don't want to take, so we throw them out there, make it make it go. Whether I'm wrong about that, I hope I, you know, I might wear it on me, but that's what I see in this report.
That's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is give you the best possible advice from our professional experience. We're not trying to write the building.
So then due diligence about like, let's see where, you know, part of this could have been. Then the construction engineer, understanding any cracks that we saw, documentation in the brick of the air where we see settling, cracks in the doorway. Pins of the of the attic, and we see that the wall is not connected to the roof. Those type of that type of documentation would be very probably the end decision.
In my reading of this. I think I'm hearing you say is that your estimates may, keeping this building and making it usable. Cost four million dollars for. Yeah, is is that a.
At this high level, like Ron's right now, at this high level budgeting, yes, that's the point.
And you're also saying that. Without a sign. That it's hard to tell what complications it might cause and inefficiencies might induce into the grand planning. By having to worry about this.
That's right.
And further, if I understand you, you're saying to get a design to a point where we really have more specific details. I'm just picking a number, but I'm assuming it's going to take six months to half a million dollars for architectural work.
I wouldn't put a cost on it, but it will take several.
And then the exploration, even if we have high school kids do it, it'll only be one person at a time and and use foot tools. Um, we're probably about to. In the end, the exploration of at least another hundred thousand dollars.
No, that was twenty, twenty to twenty to forty. So it's.
So really efficient, so call it twenty. So we do go forward in exploration. To to the term, we're likely to have to spend just for the exploration. Regardless of the. Several. Between the architecture design and the exploration.
Well, well, I start with the reports.
This is what I'm taking from their report and their understanding. Am I am I way off on this?
I I. Well, based on what it sounds like, Ron, the level of detail you think would be beneficial to the community. I didn't address it in the memo. Some costs we put in the memo didn't address this level of detail. We can do it. But it would be more along the lines of what we'll suggest and, you know, six-figure number.
Yeah, we know the. The demo cost, you know, we subrange at this point, you know, architectural fees are typically about ten percent of the construction cost. So for the total fee, so you'd be paying some portion of that, depending on what level of design. We wouldn't want to get to.
Six billion dollars.
It's six hundred thousand dollars, it's ninety, a couple of hundred. To get to that detail. So let me just make sure of some, so but so if we explore it. Do it in definitive detail. It's going to be several hundred thousand, but just to explore. At this point, based on your preliminary assessment. You believe it'll cost enough four million dollars to to keep it and renovate it as opposed to replacing it. Is that summarized what I'm hearing?
In terms of project costs, it's not in terms of construction costs. We didn't evaluate it. The construction cost difference is less. It was thirty five percent.
But there would still, those costs would be associated with new destruction and existing destruction.
So what I'm hearing is is the actual difference. In cost based on these estimates, which are shared here, between keeping the building and placing it. What's the net effect? Not the new diligence or just the actual.
I I think in terms of construction costs, it's about. Three to four million dollars until we do more investigation, I think. I think the other thing, though, from understanding you, Ron, you're not just interested in what would it cost to renovate this building. But in 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 a fairly level of detail, that we can explain why this cost, uh. But you also want to know what, how much cheaper would it be for the other, the rest of the project if that stuff is in here?
Well, that that's the point that I'm. So as I look at your program, you have four bathrooms, two spare walls, a a library. And two classrooms. Though that program currently resides in the high school. Right? So. That program then has a budget amount in our new house, whatever that is. So that compared to what your program, what you're estimating in here. Should be, we there should be a difference. If you think that estimate that that program in this space. Is going to be X amount more than it is in the new high school. All we're all I'm worried about is what is that X amount? Because the program is what the program is, it's the cost what it is.
Yeah, right. And I think that's that's what we brought markers, the substantial, I mean. The similar buildings, eight seventy is square foot. We're we're carrying seven forty is square foot, and we think that's high. We think it would be closer. In the six to seven under range. So then there's that delta.
I don't know what that program is. I don't know what it what what's in there. There's a lot that there that goes, right?
Well, like we were talking, I mean, one of the challenges too with this building is to be able to connect two floors. You don't you don't think that that's second floor to connect.
I mean, that's a detail in, you know, restoring an old building to be a school that we haven't talked about yet. But what we call floor-to-floor height in a new school is usually a bit higher than it is in a loose in an old building. That's a, that'll create some complications. We can work it out, but it is a complication. But I I want to be quick. Make sure I understand you're asking, Ron, because it sounds like what we need to do. Ultimately, is this, I think this would get the misinformation, and I don't know if you're suggesting this. Design, but to do a design. That. Has this building been done? Get the cost. Do a cost estimation on that. Do another design that saves this building and is slightly different. In terms of the new construction and get the cost of that. And then compare the.
If that, if you had to do it that way to get active in the cost, you know, at schematic level. Probably you could get budgetary numbers on it. Then I I think that would be decent information that happened. Right? So one of the things that, you know. I think we just need to be very clear when we say this building costs. Uh, if we do any renovations, this building costs. If that thought process and, you know, we need to understand that, we need to be able to quantify.
Can I add to your question on? Is your interest in pursuing is in challenging those cost differences in their estimates? Or is it to have backup support for the decision?
Well, it doesn't, it's both. Whatever, whatever. Whatever we do, when we're talking about demolishing a a building that's been a part of this community for a hundred years. We need to have a document in in place. So if anyone questions what what, why we did what we did. We we are able to provide with documentation that shows that. I don't want to be in a position where all of a sudden on Facebook, like on the world, whether people don't have any information. And they make judgments that all of a sudden the building just gets demolished and no, there is no. If we spend money to do our due diligence to understand what the true cost is of the of this building. And we can clearly show, clearly say to the community, this is why the choice we are making.
So I'll add that we can do that. Independent of this decision, if we, if I mean, what we're bringing to you is that we definitively know this will be more expensive. To go this route than to go new construction. So that's and that's why we're bringing it to you in October versus still further down the road with some notifications. Is to see if you want us to go further, because we know that that, you know, time is of the essence for most things, but we all make the right decision and give you the right information. But we can also spend that time while we to back up the decision without necessarily doing the full design.
Well, one of the things that I, as Brian and that well, I'm going to talk about some fact there in summer was about two master plans. One that showed this building in place and then one that showed the. And I think that's still important to understand how this overall campus laid out and how it impacts it, what that, you know, what that, yeah. Um, so hopefully you guys are making progress towards that. And if you think that this building best serves itself as a library and a couple of classrooms. Uh, we have program that we didn't identify. Uh, that is part of the barn that we need to incorporate somehow into our new facility. And that's a place for robotics. So we have things there that. I think we we need to work on and I think we need to understand how to. If you guys, you know, Dan, you've mentioned that you're putting more cost into your, or they. If we're not, you know, I don't know if you can talk to Brian about what what the concern is about getting further testing done or everything like that. Then that we then we should explore that because no matter what, we need to know what what hazards materials are in.
And that's on the agenda for tomorrow. Uh, B M T V, I think, um, we need to, we kind of have a serve or a hair report now. We want to take it to the next level, get three quotes and get actual surveys of the whole building. Cause either, yeah, like I said, either way, we're going to have to do that.
And I would encourage, if we have this or not, that if you form a root, I guess, instead of it's built a root, that was probably asbestos in it in the adjacent right there. So we need to understand all that. So when we even go to demo, we understand that there's also.
What is the difference between pretty much completely renovating a building? And having a brand new building? Like, at what point do we renovate this building so heavily that it's no longer the same building?
I mean, that that's a great question, actually. And on a recent project. Uh, we're we're the architects on the replacement of Beaverton High School. And I don't know if any of you know the site, but uh, there's the old high school, the. Existing high school. And then, um. Near the road was this elementary school called Merle Davies Elementary School. Really nice old brick building. When we started the master planning of that, we looked at, um. Options for, uh, reusing it. It was challenging to figure out how to incorporate it into the high school program. But what we kind of, uh. Which the district, um, to decide to demolish it was, we had a historical consultant as part of our team who. You know, even with this building, we'll have to bring somebody on who has to do the paperwork with the state board. But that building had been remodeled so many times over the years. And on the outside, it still had the old brick, you know, windows. But actually, even the old windows have been repaired because they were energy inefficient. So over the years, the district had replaced them. The interior was looked like new school. And so the historical consultants said, well, you know, it's hard to make the argument that you're really, um, demoing. Something that has historical significance when even on the outside, there've been modifications. And on the inside, it looks like a new building, doesn't look anything like. You know, I mean, so that's a thing to think about. If you are going to do the travel of renovating a building, you want to. Maintain the character. You don't want to make it look very modern on the inside, which. May, I mean, be an issue in terms of a modern. School program. I I still think the plan that sort of strength came up with is. Be the ball of a library and some adjacent classrooms. I think that's. I think that could be kind of still kind of maintain the integrity of the building.
So around that is that our community members are really concerned. And they want facts figures. They want to know the whole thing. So that's why we were. Because they put out.
Yeah. I think that's a good point, but we we would, um, need to add the detail, you know, to like the engineers. Reports that we didn't attach, you know, to help really. Provide, you know, full transparency there. So I think that's great.
I always agree as me and the decision you guys make. I think. What I haven't yet heard you talk quite as much about, but it's. I just please be calm, I said, like. At the right now, definitely three point nine, maybe isn't right, I remember, but it's. Well, for many, I don't know. You buy the back, it's two million dollars. What, at what point? Are you, do we need to keep putting? If I can get on a boat every day, that's a thousand, because I give a point with another hundred thousand dollar bill, hundred thousand dollar bill. Uh, when when we know when we went out to the voters. We talk about being as absolutely efficient as we could be with the money. And it's the budget is going to be, so I'm, this is your decision. But I think it'd be wise to ask. What is it going to cost both in time and money? And what would you need to see out of that to change your mind from what is there right now? Because I'm changing my rules in math, but say seven hundred bucks a square foot or whatever. You know, so every classroom that's a thousand square feet, I don't intend to do that, I can't. So, you know, just start thinking of it in that in that way. So anyway, I just, I haven't heard yet. Remember, it's not, it it isn't zero or something without budget, I promise. Every money you spend now is less money than I have to spend today. But but I just wanted to make sure you remember that, how it goes.
I'd like to, in the interest of making progress for the work I'm doing. There's a discussion going in 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 motions. I'd like to throw a motion on the table when it gets to get second, then we'll have a discussion and you can express how you feel.
This is a work group, so I'm about to do motions, but if you want to, uh, adjust the agenda, make that. If you have that important. What what's the timeline for renovating this stupid desk, yes?
Last of construction.
What do you design? Would it take a year of construction?
Uh, yes. So it's it the the construction time is as much or sometimes more if we get into piles and foundations and different stuff. After new construction. But it would be concurrent.
Yeah, yeah, we're. There's nobody in here.
Some of our cost analysis factors in. Reduce costs for economy of scale and. And working on adjacent structures and stuff. And what I'm kind of hearing on. Is it three point nine higher conservative? But what would that number be to make? You know, what is that break number, that breaking number? Maybe we can look at a range, go back and say this is what things could cost. What they should cost. And we can kind of identify some of that conservative conservatism into a range. The hell if we move this estimate to their.
Well, if you get down level, I specifically asked a member of the community who was expressing her deep desire to. What kind of dollar figure off it's worth? I said, so if we all initiative more to build. But you you certainly it's not us something to keep it. And we just blow it down to that simple vision. What is that? It's going to cost us a fifty dollars more. Do go ahead and do it. It's going to cost us two million dollars more. It's going to cost us three million dollars. And she just said. And I said, and again, this is where it's going to look at. And so, you know. I think in conscious board member, should I be treating whatever you're responsible by to maybe try to keep it? If it costs eight two million dollars a year addition. And she just said, but it says you got it done to see. And the last point I just told, no matter what decision you make for us. I think that can accept decisions.
If we keep this building, would it be connected to the main? If we keep it not connected, it wouldn't be.
We would like to be connected, I think that would be. Couldn't couldn't connect the second floor.
Well. The thing you probably would have to do is have some sort of. Um, connecting hallway that had a ramp, you know, the floor was sloped so you could get from one level to the other. I mean. It's it's a little complicated, but I think it's still.
But then you're connecting the path.
I think we need to summon, either through officially next meeting or by consensus meeting, give them an answer on either one of these.
The third and and Danny. Eight seven year I just. The third purpose, essentially, how much more money do you want to spend for five years? Yeah, I got the baby too. So that's the third option. You know. Like it. I hope we must be hired to be all for and all that. You're not fifty percent off.
I just cannot even get close to rationalizing it in the interest of the district. I can't even get close. It's it and these numbers are. Pretty close to the exact to the to the same numbers you came up with when we did this the last time we did it. They were different numbers, but they get delta. It's pretty equal. Eleven to bad. How many experts we have here? How many experts we had before? How many experts we had before? And regardless of all the pros that I agree that there are keeping the building. The concept always ended up pretty similar. In relative to our responsibility to the district.
What I heard, uh, you know, in your report, you're you're struggling to do this testing for. Uh, I think you have enough to understand what real quickly. And we have a forty thousand dollar. Estimate, I don't know if that was. Uh, and it sounds like in that you guys were assuming that your bubble will offer every space to contain all the dust. Uh, so. I think the district is without having gone through the rooms yet. Obviously, I I. But uh. You know, I don't know if it builds to expectations from what we budgeted and that is what is needed. For um for a building that's vacant.
Yeah, the only caveat would be if it is asbestos and hot, which the testing we need to do, then we would have to do that.
And have to receive the the testing. What we've already provided.
Yeah, yeah, it's a ten percent. It's the. Well, what we found is that is. That's what they think it is. It hasn't been actually tested. And so we called them and asked because the report was a little um. Jeezy and so they said actual test and testing hasn't been done. It was just a opinion survey. So um. So that's the. If it's asbestos, then it's it then it's going to be more expensive to do investigations. But if it's not, then you have to.
Yeah, and to be clear. You guys correct me if I'm wrong. You guys need to know that whether this building needs to demolish.
Yeah, like like I said earlier, we are going to propose tomorrow, we get three quotes, three confirms um. To do a full survey because we have to do it either way. So. Uh, it might slow down the investigation a little bit, but I think we can get some. We'll show them specifically, you know, the areas we want to test, plus they'll just take samples of everything. And then we can get that information as quickly as we can, at least the test results.
We can only get more information, but we've spent forty about forty five minutes on this. We need to make progress. This is a work section. What are we going to do? Are we going to agree to continue delivery? Are we going to make a choice? What are we going to do? Whether we vote on it now by changing rules or what are we going to do?
I'll tell procedurally. What you're going to end up adopting. For our permanent record of the district and all that in the master plan. This is the stuff in a way. So, you know, there's you're not going to be like making a resolution towards this. Essentially, what we would be voting on. Would be a director for me. To work with our construction team on developing that master plan. So and it might not stand in good judgment which the options. Master plan doesn't include this, but I recognize the district and quite friend it. A master plan that doesn't include this. That starts to talk about what would have, what would be taken away from the other side of the construction. And this would be doing it instead and accounting for the overage in price. Or continue to invest in refining the numbers more. But really, those are the third option. Put the details, but essentially, you would be voting on giving me the directives to work with it. Because if it then result in your resolution to adopt the master plan, that was indicative of that um direction.
I propose that either this meeting or the next, we um. Select option by vote. Not discounting any of the concerns at all. And not disrespecting the. But on balance. We'd be concerned. Dollars. Statistics. Due diligence. Our improvements selected members report. Get the gap is big enough than all of us. I think even more time to spend on it. Not. Explainable.
I think best practice would be to follow no one protocol.
Well, we'll just set this to work. So are we? Adding this to the agenda, the work that we had already agreed to? You know, or or are we adding it to the agenda before we?
I love that I mean by order, this is like a graduation formal thing. You're just. Voting to give me a direction. I think you really probably don't need to follow official markers. Rules for giving the superintendent directive, but to bear the process, I suggest following. If you want to make a formal like motion on agenda, we don't need to be giving interactive related this. You could add to the next. This would also. This would also take into account what was posted on board for the public, however we can remember that. So procedurally, I.
So the interview you're giving is a superintendent direction, like folks. You have the direction.
That was the discussion before I second option.
So the second obligation considered is not meaning you have to agree with the. It just means that on. And that idea of this is spirit is that one board member should not be able to force the board to top. And you can just bring up every idea you want. So that's just.
All I'm doing is is asking the board to. To discuss it and then to vote.
Turn to me.
So I made a proposal. It's waiting a second. Like you said, what is your cost? And I I don't see how they can see it anymore. True, the difference in costs. And you, I know you've talked about a lot of different considerations, but is this the first time you've had to renovate this? No, I mean, we have we select these people based on their expertise and experience. They don't have an, I don't read an agenda. They're just necessarily sweaty and. I don't know if they want us to get rid of it or to keep it. I have probably something they're assessing as real, even if I pick it apart. The gap is so big, it's it's still going to be a lot more money. And as far as the community is concerned, if they're willing to do it, provides additional black condition, I'll do best. I think that's all we need. But I don't, and I just hate there's potentially spending more time and money on it. So these are maybe they go beyond the daily that starts spending.
So I agree with what you're saying. I feel like logically, but it brings us. It makes moments to building down and to just start fresh and to go with it. But then there's also. I love what you did with the library, whoever was designing that was the idea of like, this is a hundred year old, the Lingor War. And having it preserved, we do have money to do it. Uh. Yes, more and I don't know what the difference is, right? But I just, I think the idea of having the oldest for building in the city would be amazing. To have it on the registry, to have it as like something that is infecting the the past and the future. I love that idea. But then I'm thinking like, does that, would it look to me my bottom line is students? So are they going to, I love libraries, I could spend my life in old libraries, particularly the European ones. But I don't know that most students are going to walk in here and. So glad we got this thing, right? Like this is, I love the heart of the floor and the library is just a great place to be like I. When I think about education, I see libraries almost across the week because of where these are in our life. And so it's almost like this idea of we're going to make this a modern building, which will be appealing to students. We're going to make it an old building, which is appealing to like community members. And that is the tension. I see, I see very strong arguments both sides. And yes, the money should be the bottom line. Should be, but then there's also something to be said about the historical. Protection and even New York had a legacy and everything we need to see. So. And it's a it's a really tough. But I do, I really appreciate what you're saying, like, if we have whatever, I didn't know. Uh, if we have the pictures and the photographs, like the documents, we should say. This is what we see, this would be as best as before, this would be the back, and we think we have no intuitive that there's maybe more than just. Lucky things, you know, they're not available. So there's that. So like we have additional documentation for this position title, which is why I don't do this.
And we get all this probably for not, oh, I'd be much more. Perfectly, please have the new goal resemble this.
Yeah, that was part of my idea of like what makes it old or new like.
Because all your P is this. If we can recreate it, let's set it to some degree. It could be.
So from my standpoint, um, you know, made it clear, but when I look at the costs. I have uh. Soft profit over two million dollars. I have a contingency fund of one point three million dollars. I have a rerouting of three hundred fifty thousand dollars and. We we know we need to reroute, but as I mentioned, the only scope that would be associated with that would be demo. Be a part of this. And I know, you know, Dan, to your point, it may not be at this active because we have footage. So in this design, in sort of strength design, they have a demo of windows and infilling of windows. For doing a real new master plan. So I don't know if we need demo windows or fill windows or not. I know the district spent money through a grant to replace the. That's not all of it is. I don't know, due diligence has been done to see if any of those windows are still operable, if the ceiling are broken or what's taking place. I go back to cornerstone and. When you mentioned John and about this. And in search of that statement, this three three dollars per square. Uh, you're adding another thousand dollars. But I think we're almost stopped for dollars, but I don't know where that's at. First time. We need to do the testing to understand what we have. So in the structural estimate, like I mentioned, there's hundred fifty thousand dollars that we put in there for contingency. Another five hundred thousand dollars was added for what I saw as contingents. The seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Add as contingency to understand the structural. Add to the one point three, I mean, that we already have for contingency. So what that contingency, we're now about to do a doll. So then the other thing is we need to understand the cost of demolition of this building. Because if we try to save the building, then obviously we're saving that cost. So we need to understand that part. I mentioned the program, given that we've got four bathrooms that are elected to put in this space. We need those bathrooms no matter what. So we have a delta between the two. That is being understood what the delta. We also have the difference in the library and and the, you know, all the functions in the library and what that. And then most of the cheap bathroom, but we need to understand that the delta is. Can see the the scope for the estimate on the demolition of four thousand dollars. I would. Two thousand dollars a hole. For three days worth of work. I'd like to understand a little bit more. What's involved?
Detail lessons.
And obviously, it depends on how much paint if you have to do, uh, what kind of material you're renting. Uh, if you're only being staffed to get eleven foot. Then it will to your phone. I think the numbers that are apparently showing here, I think there is. Almost four million dollars of that ten million dollars and that's being discussed as contingency.
So why would they put that in there? For no good reason.
Because they don't know when when they're going to get into the risk.
But you do.
No, I don't, but it's risk assessed. And so. Well, what I'm saying, let me finish, is risk assessment. That the experts have not done their due diligence to dive in here and explore what what the connections are. Explore um the the things that need to be done to provide more accuracy. And as such, they're being conservative in their approach to the dollar limit. To put that in. Well, we're now going on to. Anyone else has any comments?
Comments about this or? It's a lot to. Digest.
To me, it comes down to function, right? And would this be a functional state given to what Chris sees? Would it be a functional state that our students actually can be creative, should learn. And hang out. I mean, I can see how this could be a beautiful MDS. With these catches or, you know, whatever, but it it could be really functional that way. The classroom part of it is confusing to me because we're basically taking. Both of the rooms, like just choosing one side and combining them into one class. I don't know if that's absolutely necessary unless there. You know, if there would be specific classrooms that would fit in there instead. Um, you know, that maybe don't have as many students or it's kind of all the same. So to me, it's kind of like trade up, like, what can we use it for? How many students can we get in here? And really, kind of getting back to where it started today was, you know, it's a. That's kind of where I'm sitting. I'm not, but I mean, like, maybe that's the lead what I got to, that's absolutely. That's what I was trying to say, so so I don't, I don't think that. Totally the same. And I think, um, so to me, it's really about it's getting to a well point with the money savings. Is that real? Probably that that maybe that's not, so it, you know, that's worth exploring a little bit better. But I also think, like, I brought this up in August for a reason. Um, at the beginning of August, like, this is the most important issue that we're gonna have to deal with. We need to deal with this now, so that they can get started. And here we are in October. So. Yeah.
So those people that found me were really concerned, that they wanted to keep this part of history adorable town. But, you know, I think that they also understood that maybe we can't say. And so they weren't adamant that's one way or the other. Um, but they just concerned about wanting to be this.
So we faded. I'm also concerned about what keeping this building does. Kind of the master plan and how that's. Um, I mean, I think what you presented today, you kind of have a driveway going in front of it anyway, so maybe that. Because I've always been under the impression that would kind of weight a lot of stake between here and street. Um, this was footprint, but we don't have any footprint here, so that's why I said. And that's really important, um, from your drawings, it looked like you've got quite a few parking space that we might have. Kind of figure out.
Well, we're trying to actually add parking, so we're dispersing it into different locations.
Um, but I think, you know, as we get more people in the city, this is, you know, since. Even more important issue coming forward, so I think minimizing our footprint is really kind of. We have to take that into consideration at this point. I mean, I'm not sure what this building does to that foot, obviously. Skewed what we can do between here and and the parking lot, but in the barns. So they'll just kind of wait.
I understand that, then. You would like to see a map of my back operating to keep it on this building, to understand what that is.
I mean, I think I. Can picture it in my mind that. The other than like some sort of obtuse looking building right on the site that is sitting in that space, whether or not we can. You know, that's that stays function for anything other than. Which, you know, but I think again, may not be our best, um, choice to put. But there are.
The investigation that we have to do for like your stuff with some of the safety, we have to do that as a matter of fact. Downloading it or repeating it, we still need to know.
Yeah.
And I also heard them say that if you could, you could continue with the mapping plan. While also getting us the information that we need. Right? So that's, to me, that makes sense, that we're still considering, like, it's been completely off the table, but it's also. They're going to have the master planning to see what what is possible with.
But the math, what the math fund needs to create, provide two different, two different looks, which is what we discussed in that, right?
That's what we discussed originally, what the group came up with at the first meeting, neither group had an option. Let's save this building. I put C T even there. Way more toward the zero, I mean, like four times maybe this building. I don't need a group plan that would work for this building. Um, it wasn't a library, it was C T, so if it's gonna be C T, that's a problem, because C T is not one of the sound. So so my expectation was, if you guys have a choice or a program for this, and you're thinking that the library is the program for this. Then put the library in there and it's work, right?
Yeah, we can do, but I think it's important for your your concept of that. Because there's a difference between the method by taking a footprint and moving forward. And taking a footprint and developing two different ways to do it, which are costs.
Is the footprint of this as a media center driver match what you would do in a new build?
So if I understand what the direction so far to brick is, two different methods. One, keep in this building, you guys left a program. They go out with that. And another one that knocks down with it. That presentation was going to eliminate that. Was going to be shared with us in November. I remember, so we would have to make a decision by December. Right?
That was the original. Prior to the due diligence, they've done since. And they've given us an update based on their due diligence. That more quantifies the differences in expense and time. I think this is, this is a a chance to redirect it. We also wanted to make sure, because we've just got the price basically for the investigation work. So it was a pretty good opportunity to say, hey, we're starting, we're gonna invest some real money now. We just wanna make sure if if there was a different direction, we knew that before we invested that money. Um, like you said, the investment will be either way, the investigation work, we would, if we had direction of. It's not part of the master plan to keep this building, then we wouldn't spend money to open up. Yeah, team, you know, all that sort of stuff, so.
Given the layout of the building, I would, and if that cost is too high, forty thousand dollars, like, I think two thousand, almost two thousand dollars. Whole, uh, I don't know, the structural engineer would understand, like, hey, we didn't have the building, add the holes. Uh, and make the assumption that. The other half, the other side of the building is was built the same way as the side of the building. Right? That that'd be risk, the project that they worked with them. But would that be a safe risk?
I don't know, that might be a question I do.
Well, I just. Because I wanna give you the information you need, and I I feel you're looking for a lot of detailed information. Well, I don't want to hear changing on information, so I wanna make sure we're giving you as much detail as we feel the community needs. To make an informed decision, so I I, we're already at a high level budget and that. You know, it's it's just a budget and it's kind of troubling because it's not, there's not a lot of detail. So so what the your structural engineer came back and and said, we need to look at. You're gonna go back and structural engineer to understand that they saw cracks in the footprint here. Uh, that they saw cracks throughout this area where they see the seven, where the foundation didn't work. Um, it's been here four hundred years. So you understand.
I I don't, they did write, I don't know if it's that, that they feel strongly, they wouldn't be doing, you know, their professional service to the district. If they given there's literally no asphalt crimes, even if there's no sign of a crack anywhere, to just blindly go into this and say it's fine would be irresponsible.
This this just goes for the forty thousand dollars for the current holds that would talk. So anyway, back to, I think we've had discussion. Um, I think we're time for them, um, on this subject. Um, so as well, if I understand what you recommended, with that was option one, um, you would, um, what was in there? And.
So we were moving around, you intended to act on it. For the district.
I'm trying to get back to where that was listed.
I can read around, yeah, it's really, again. If I break or some concede books on both the long with that plan and initial quantum football program. They're gonna lose the current district office, or here's why, for some reason, remove the current district office will find great ways to maintain. So to be fair, if you want anything other than that, maybe.
So all in favor of that?
Bye.
All those.
I mean, I feel like a lot more information. And I feel like by voting yes to this, we're saying you don't need.
Well, and I, I think my goal, I I didn't understand that totally, it didn't mean anyone.
They had already said they'd be happy.
Right.
But I think that's, that is really the question you guys are right now, like, is what they talked about today sufficient for you? And to Dan's point, he has a big one today, he's happy to give you. But if you feel more investment is needed. You can do that, but that's really, if they keep going forward, of course, if you, you can get all sorts of not mistakes. Always see them, it's really about, do you want more investigation? The cost they just got to wherever it ends up in, or the, but that's, that's really what we're doing. If if you're not ready, our information has been prevented, it's named, if you are ready, those information is prevented.
But so if we go for option one. My, my understanding from Brick, maybe this is an assumption of my thought, then you would not develop a master plan of keeping.
That's correct. About the thing made. The yay is, the decision is essentially made, like, there's no continuing ever and ever and all that, but like, you would be. Telling everyone to move forward in the master plan until this being a blank state, it's not gonna restart. But I mean.
Why? I have a lot of low rock. I just. I thought we were.
This is something I just came to.
And I thought we did have more time to decide. I definitely was. Number, like, whether it's.
You you can, but again, the the point here, and I just want to be clear, the person sees the budget every day. I we, and well, maybe I need to do a better read off of like. If you want to read the updates on the bond, but like, it is a Euro sum, so when, when, um. D N C cornerstone. And Brick. Got to this level, it felt prudent to say, is this, if. If you think by opening this up, it's possibly gonna go down to a, okay, so the question would be, is it worth? Public money, right? It's not my money, it's not your money, it's the public's money, to invest it further to get to a different decision. That that's why we brought it to you now, because like time is money, right? And so. Like every dual plan they do takes away from votes in those. And but again, I want to be clear, why we brought it now as opposed to. That's the end of the global review, ultimately requires our victory. So time sort of becomes severe.
Okay. I don't believe the budget that we have here shows the difference of the. That the station, here's when the program costs in the next, versus the permanent deposit. So when we talk about dollars, we go. I don't think we understand what the cost is. Uh, make that decision.
I feel that way, dude.
Well, we have to do the two plans. That is what you're saying, it would take like six months to do or longer?
Well, I mean, that's a question, so that. What we're talking about is continuing mass, potentially continuing master planning. So that we can present something to you in November that has an option with this building and option without, which is, no, we do, we can do that. What I. I think the level of detail, though, that maybe Ron is asking for, is not something that can happen in a month, because we have to design to a certain level. The building, and we're not designing the building, that doesn't even start to. We're just dealing with the overall site things now. Saying if we're going to really, really care, apples, what is a design of the high school? Edition with this building and what would it be like without, be able to really get into the details? That's a longer business.
Right, so basically to know if our contingency gets smaller. And if our definitive numbers.
Yeah.
Get bigger, we need more design, you know, it's size, the depth of the buildings, how much rebar. The sheer walls, size, width, height, the connection to the roof, you know, all those details, where we more cost certainty as to what that cost would be. Versus using historical data, which is what we're doing right now, is historical data based on what we've done with these past improvements.
Ron, just a time check, we have students here, so it's probably, let's finish the vote.
I don't see.
So where are we at? Yes or no?
We have.
Option one is on the table, that's it.
Yeah.
You can say yes or no.
Let's.
Yes. Did you vote?
I don't know if suddenly actually voted.
Ryan, you're the one. I said I'd save it. I guess I'm going to stay because I think that I would like. To know if we can save or not save without.
So if you, so if you abstain, that means you have two guesses versus one now. So then what you, what you just mentioned, started to mention later. Was it would pass the motion. So you don't get what what you're.
So we're passed. With the two guesses.
Because you would have two guesses. To be able to understand and know that they're still calling.
And then, yeah. Well, you begin on with the building of our, so I'm the historian, come along to our historic. I love keeping our history alive. But I think also. We need to do our due diligence and say, what's gonna be really the best for? What are all of us going to really enjoy this building? Are we going to use this building for this curriculum significantly? Are we going to do things historically in here so that people will know? I mean, I just got questions. Or are we just gonna have a laundry and a couple of bathrooms? Fashion, I feel I wanna know.
We might understand what you're saying. Um, you want more information? Um, and that would have been the fault to a note that it would not provide that more information.
Um, well, that's not it. Well, if they've said they'll provide us whatever.
But they're all putting investment more, what what they also stated was that that would be part of the. View of their decision, right?
That would be just support.
It it, which doesn't change the outcome, right? So you can grab, you can gather all the information, doesn't change the outcome.
We get what I'm expecting.
Well, so to to last week, to your, you know, you're trying to make a decision to try to change the act. About looking at this building and utilizing this building in the. Then that would not be agreeing with what is all.
But I'm not agreeing, you won't be sitting there like.
But I'm not agreeing, you won't be sitting there like.
God, I just want a nice door for our trip. All things.
That motion passed three on. And. You know, Brian, you now have a good direction, you think should, uh, for to look at removing this thing. Supported up.
Uh, thank you, thank you for coming to answer questions.